I will call to order regular meeting of the Wellington Board of Selectmen. It is Tuesday, July 5th, 2022 at 6:30 PM. If you will join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Excited as approval of minutes should have in your packet from our last regular meeting, which was June 21st. Make the motion to accept the minutes as written. Sorry, motion by, what is it, sent by Jim? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, next item is President to speak. If you are, there's no one in the room with us, so if you are on the call, you do have the ability to unmute yourself. I ask you just to be the record and limit yourself to two minutes. Is there anyone present to speak? Yes, Ms. Reese.
Hello, can you hear me?
Again.
Sweet, Sarah Reese, 15 Pine Crest Road. So it's of no secret that many people in town are frustrated due to the lack of follow-up by our leaders in regards to someone using unethical practices of gaining information on those with dissenting voices and showing up unannounced and uninvited on private property. As stated before, I'm sure there's certain steps and protocols one must take due to legal reasons, which I am compassionate to. I hope this matter is not just acknowledged but also addressed, and our leaders set a precedent that intimidation tactics have no place in Wellington. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present to speak? One, going twice? There will be an opportunity to speak at the end of the meeting. All right, move on to correspondence. You have a list of correspondents available on the Selectmen's office. Distracted as I try to do both. Our secretary is not here this evening. All right, I'll start with my update. The Steve Grant for the Old Town Hall Septic and included some work inside. We have a signed contract with DPH, so we will be moving forward to put forth an RFP to begin that work. And what's important to us is that we follow all of the necessary steps with the state's process, but be cognizant of the fall activities we have on the green, i.e. the car show and the flea market, especially after two years of the flea market not being able to be held. So we will work to navigate those necessary obstacles. The school building committee will meet this Wednesday, July 6th. The meeting will be hybrid, so it will be here upstairs in the TOB as well as on Zoom. So you can check our website for the agenda as well as the link to the meeting. Lots of project that, there's an item under new business on this agenda, so we'll talk about it there. Truck lease, we're still waiting for our F-350. Troy and I talk about this on a regular basis. We're not talking about it daily, but we definitely check in weekly. So we're gonna reach out to them again and maybe, you know, pay them a visit to see what we can do to move this along. We certainly don't want the order to be canceled because a new truck would be significantly more than what we paid for. So keep me posted. The ARPA Commission, you should both have in your packets an update on the ARPA Commission. This is what was shared publicly as well. So the Commission met last week and closed the application process for now because we currently have projects exceeding the available funding. We haven't actually received the second tranche of funding, but based on all of the items that we have received and heard and are taking to public hearing right now, if we were to fund everything, which we cannot, we would be about $200,000 short. So some things are not going to be able to be funded, or at least funded in full. So we couldn't give in full funding for all of these projects. So once the hearing, a public hearing takes place and then any approvals or denials happen, we'll reevaluate the ability to accept the projects based on funding. So the next public hearing is scheduled for July 11th at 6:30. There are multiple items, you can see there are about 12 items on that agenda. So what we'll do is continue the hearing to the 14th at 6:30 if we don't get them through so that we can recognize a reasonable timeframe so that people can take part in the discussion. So, you know, we're not discussing this if people might have left us at number 10. So there's several items on there, so if you each have a list of them and then they are on our website. If they weren't put out today, they will be tomorrow on social media as well. So July 11th at 6:30, that will be a hybrid public hearing, so go right here in this room and then via Zoom.
Monday and a Thursday.
Yes. And then Thursday is just if needed, as needed, correct? So at the Monday meeting, if there needs to be more time. What I had said when we got to the point where we're ready to call a town meeting, I had suggested to, I'm sorry, not town meeting, a public hearing, I had suggested two separate public hearings, dividing the items in half, but not taking any action until they were all heard. And so what we decided to do, after much discussion, we decided to put them all on one agenda and then extend the meeting if we needed to. But the plan is not to take any action until all of them have been heard at public meeting. To keep them all on a level playing field. All right, the Town Management Estate Parcel. This is the parcel on Mesa Road. We received a grant from D. We officially closed on the parcel on June 28th, so now officially belongs to the town of Wellington. We'll be working with the state to finalize the payment on the grant, and that will reimburse the funds that we did purchase. We, again, were planning, anticipating about a 50% grant, and we got 65%. So that will be, that's great. And I'll be working with the Conservation Commission to hold an event probably onsite later in the year as we get signage and all of that is taken care of to kind of make a big to-do about the new lands. COVID-19, I will just tell you, we've had since our last meeting 13 new cases. The state is changing the way that they're reporting the information and the way the site looks, so that was quite a surprise this morning when Kelsey and I went in to obtain the information. So it's been kind of quiet here around town while there's still COVID out there. We're still not seeing as much serious uptrends, but it is still certainly prevalent, very prevalent. And then I will just touch on an item that came up at President to speak. So a couple of weeks ago, we had heard some, from some residents about an individual who had been out and about knocking on doors, and it seemed in connection to a new applicant going through a planning and zoning process. So I did say that we would investigate that matter. I did, and I had anticipated that it would have been addressed at the last planning and zoning meeting. The reason it was not is the public hearing was not open. Therefore, the individuals did not speak about it, and I could not speak about that application at that meeting per their role. So it was a little bit frustrating and hand-timed. What I will tell you, I found was that the individual that had knocked on three doors and tried to communicate with several others was a member of a public relations firm that had been hired by a developer that's looking to build in Wellington. And that PR individual had taken it upon himself to take this method of discussing with people who it appeared had written on social media. So I did communicate that that was not a tactic that I supported, I thought should be handled. They did, the developer did communicate that they did not authorize that direction, and they had cut ties with that firm. They also then had expressly said that they would be addressing it at the planning and zoning meeting. So I was incredibly disappointed that they did not. Their reasoning was that the public hearing wasn't open, so they couldn't speak about it. And again, knowing the rules of planning and zoning, I did not address it. But there was, to my knowledge, never any, no one was in danger, and certainly if someone feels when someone comes onto their property that they're in danger, they should reach out to the proper authorities and state police. So while we didn't know who they were, I had anticipated it to be addressed at the proper authority, which was the Planning and Zoning Commission, and it was not. So I will, once that hearing opens, and my understanding is that hopefully for the third time, it will open on the 19th of July, you will hear me speak publicly to them to address that particular situation and why they didn't try to address it with our residents before that. So that's where that stands, and I will let that conversation happen in the proper form at planning and zoning. Anything else on my update? Okay, Public Works, sure you have your report, Troy, but I'll let you get that.
Okay, roadside mowing is still going around. On every couple of days, we try to go out with the mowers. We removed the bushes and loomed in front of the center school. Tomorrow, we'll be paving the islands there. The superintendent decided to remove the bushes, so we removed all of them, and they'll be paved, and he's gonna put some flower pots out, from my understanding. We installed a new stop sign on Laurel Drive. We've repaired some curbs that we had some issues that the water was going down into some residents' lawns, so we fixed that today. I just want to let everybody know that the Catch Basin truck is out doing the catch basin. And so if you see a big blue truck out there cleaning out the basins, they are in town cleaning out the basins. The Moose Meadow Road project, currently the catch basins have been installed. We're still waiting for some underdrain pipe that won't be delivered until August 11th. So right now, we're kind of at a standstill until that pipe gets delivered, and then there's about 300 feet to go, and then we'll be done on our end, and we'll just need the paving contractor to come in and pave the road. So that's what I got.
Catch basin cleaning is pro-environmental, is that correct?
Yes, correct, yep.
That should be, they use marked trucks most of the time?
Yeah, they're, yep, they're marked.
And you can't miss them, they pick back and move.
They are, they are, but in case they're not labeled, that's, that's, so. Yeah, if you're, if you're in the vicinity when they start around 7:00 AM and you hope to sleep in, I'm sorry. All right, anything for Troy? Great, thank you, Troy. All right, that brings us to old business. So we had, I'd left you all last time with the draft of the Senior Center Coordinator position. I don't know if you all had any additional comments on it of concerns. Jenny, I know you have asked about seniors, think you were going to reach out to them. I did not hear back, anything from anyone. Did you receive any feedback?
It's actually on the agenda for Executive Committee tomorrow.
Thank you.
I mean, I have no questions other than what might come up through, through that Executive Committee. It seems all pretty straightforward. It's very task-oriented. So if these are the tasks that need to be accomplished, then who am I to say boo about it? So yeah, it seems like it's a pretty decent job description, no concerns on my end.
I have a quick addition, if that's all right?
That's one more. Just a moment, Jim?
I'm good. I had some last time.
Okay, Jenny?
Yes, so I was going to say, a lot of working with seniors involves assistance with Medicare, and I would request that the person receive CHOICE's certification, particularly if they are in fact going to be the municipal agent, because they need to have that skill set and that knowledge to be able to navigate Medicare.
Thank you.
All right, so to have it or to get it? Like it doesn't matter if they already have it or can they like get it within a certain period?
As long as they possess, right, they, Jenny, do you have that certification?
Yes, I do. You can get, like, somebody could get it within six months of hire or something like that. It would be very doable through our area agency on aging.
Got it.
So we can put a timeframe in on how long it would take?
Right, that would just be important to clarify whether they needed to come in with it or can, you know, get it within a certain time period.
So we'll hold off one more meeting and see what the seniors thing comes out. It's not required, it's whether or not we choose to require it. So Jenny says she would recommend that. So, yeah, so we can take a look at that. It's not something we currently require. Or obtain it.
Obtain it, yep.
All right, so we'll keep this on the agenda until next meeting. And then reminder, once we've approved, it needs to be approved by the agency. So, all right, so we'll move to item nine, new business, award the contract. So this is for the survey and site plan services for the Route 32 sidewalk project. This is our lots of project. We did put out an RFP, we received zero bids when, once the time had closed, I apologize. Once the time had closed, when we reached out to some of the individuals that we shared the solicitation with, most of their feedback was it was too small a project, our $1 million project, but I mean, this is relatively small, was just too small for the amount of work that they had. Firms are very busy right now with the influx of federal funding in infrastructure right now. So we did a direct solicitation to CHA, and that's what you have before you. It's the solicitation from CHA.
Just CHA or is there like the reason why this company?
Because we did, so when we put the RFP out, no one chose to do it. So we did a direct solicitation to this group, and they were willing to bid on it.
But just this group or other companies?
We had sent it out, we had put, we posted it, but then we had also sent the RFP to several other groups, and it was all the same thing, we're just, nobody had any, yeah, so this is the only response.
Got it, okay.
Any particular reason why we went to CHA?
Mike moved someone there and asked them if they'd be interested in doing this and put in a direct solicitation and sent them that. So we had gone out to some larger firms, and they, when nobody, when no one responded to kind of say, hey, this is something you would typically bid on, and again, this was after it closed.
We have experience with this.
Yes, yes. And again, everyone, again, after the bid had closed was when there was communication to say, any reason why you wouldn't have been interested, this is something that would be typically in your real house, and it was, we just don't have time for such a small project, we're so innovative. And CHA was willing to go ahead and do it.
Is this a sidewalk project that's seen with CIP?
Yes, it is. No, it's not CIP, this is a lots of project, funding through Prague.
It's on that spreadsheet, but it's still not.
I remember seeing one, that's.
No, there's not sidewalk, in CIP, it's sidewalks for the schools. There's two small, so that is around the back of Hall School, has nothing to do with the Route 32 corridor. This is from Route 32 from Hall School down to the middle.
This is, okay.
That's what this is.
From the school to not including the schools.
Yeah, in the front of the school, but with the, the one on CIP is some sidewalk behind Hall School, fits up around that, that top area.
You're trying to connect all those dots, right?
Yeah, completely, completely separate. The rules of lots of, they, when you follow their criteria, there are only certain roadways qualifying, and so that limited a lot of things when we were brainstorming ideas to apply now, going on almost two years. And so Route 32 did qualify, that's, that's what this is. So separate from the individual schools, the IP project. And so I, yes.
I do recall there was some question, this thing comes up every now and then, sidewalks, and I remember it was a question of who owns the sidewalks? And then it was like, well, everybody had to go figure that one out because it's pre-paged. So discussion was probably the whole, the whole factory at that time.
Yeah, and so at the end of the day, it's, you know, it's still an ambiguous thing. Once we, once we do this, we take ownership of them, but I think the understanding all along, even when you have the sidewalk committee forum, was that the town would end up having to do it. So it was, let's try to find grant funding to do this, and that was one of the recommendations from that sidewalk committee many years ago. And so it's been something that's been on the radar for a long time when this came up. I said, this seems so fit.
So we, by virtue of doing this project and approving it.
Yeah. Correct. And so the clearing of the sidewalks is the responsibility of the property owner in front of them, and that's by ordinance in town, and that has already existed. So we are, this project is also removing some sidewalks, and there were like some sidewalks that were to nowhere, in front of nowhere, went to nowhere, so some are being removed. Many, most of it is being replaced, and we were, if you recall, were able to extend the funding to go all the way down to the bills.
I was just trying to figure it out off of the RFQ, it wasn't exactly clear.
Yeah. All right, so I will make a motion, a motion to award the town of Wellington Engineering and Design Services for the South Wellington Village pedestrian and its streetscape improvements to CHA.
Second?
Second of my LISA discussion. It is it's 28,500 or 28,500. Any discussion?
We're responding.
We
The lots of grant?
No, this is funded by the town, and we took this to town meeting last year. I think, I apologize, I don't have it, I mean, I think it's coming from the Capital Reserve Fund, but we had taken the town meeting last year, the design costs. It's the only thing the grant did not cover was the site costs. And so we secured that funding some time ago, and then we were in the loop of going back and forth with DOT on the project, and then the RFP finally dropped. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, next item is, this is a CIP project, and so this would be awarded to vendor for Public Works excavator. So in our CIP plan, there is funding for, from the Capital Reserve Fund for an excavator. This, we will then, if we move forward on this, we will then take this to the Board of Finance, and this will have to go to a town meeting. So this is part of the current fiscal year CIP project. So in your packet, you have a bid from state approved vendor WI Clark. So I will move to award the vendor and specifications for the 2022 John Deere 60G compact excavator to the WI Clark Company in the amount of $76,306. Seconded by Jim, discussion. As you can see, this does include a trade-in, so we'd be trading in the JCB that we currently have. So while the purchase price is $85,000 with the trade-in, it brings us under a question of $75,300.
JCB, that's the, one of the backhoes of that truck.
Yes, that's the older of the backhoes. That's not the John Deere that you see at the dump or the transfer station when you go up there on the weekends. That's the one that's sitting by the sand pile. That's the old dinosaur.
Any, any particular reason we went with John Deere?
We all have, the whole town has John Deere equipment, so to switch something up, and they're a state-approved vendor. So they've been good to us, so we haven't had any problems with them.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, so step one, Troy, John will take this to Board of Finance. I'll be looking, we're looking to gather things for a potential August town meeting. All right, item C is award the vendor for Public Works Road Management Software. This is another CIP project. This would be funded from the current fiscal year budgets out of Department 930. So this would not require a town meeting. So I will, and you see a state-approved vendor in front of you. I will move to award the vendor specifications for the Beta Management Services to the Beta Group Inc. in the amount of $20,350. Seconded by LISA. So this is, they stayed with their quote that they've given us back in December, $20,350, and this will give us some data analysis of all of the roads in Wellington. And Beta is a state-approved product vendor, so they've contracted with Prague. Beta was holding us up on something that I believe had to do with the lots of project. So, you know, Prague works with, with them quite a bit.
The quote they gave was such still valid, it was like, it's like a dismember.
Yes, that's what I said, they honored their December quote.
And why don't we have to say that to town?
Because of the funding it's coming from. So the reserve fund would require a town meeting, but this is being funded out of 930, which was directly in our budget, so we follow the procurement policies. Which is a state-approved vendor or three bids. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. All right, I look forward to seeing the data, the data is able to give us. Troy, can you remind me about how long they thought, once we can get the contract going and they come out, about how long it would take them?
I spoke with them today, I didn't get an exact like date or how long it would take them to do. He wants to actually have a meeting with you and I to go over a couple of things to make sure. There's different things what they want to do with it, but I would say probably within maybe a couple of months or so, they should have the data for, and they'll present a plan to you guys or the finance, whoever would like to be on that, you know, agenda, they will, the company will do that.
They'll start with bringing, we'll have them come back and share the report here with his board, and we'll use that to then work moving forward with our larger road projects, and depending on what it tells us, we may just have some data to back up some very significant issues.
The question, yeah, it's just town roads, right? They won't feel like a state, just, and then I, we probably talked about this a long time ago, but do they give any indication of, you know, whether they talk about the traffic limitations for a road? You know, because we had that conversation about Moose Meadow, whether or not that could have handled the traffic that it was getting, the high, you know, the heavy loads. Like, do you know if they give any information on whether there's like recommendations that a road should maybe be limited to under a certain weight or something?
I don't exactly have that information. I, what I believe they're gonna do is they're gonna give you like the road assessment on it. So they're gonna say, like, say they'll walk down, we'll use like Turnpike Road for an example, and they might say, okay, Turnpike Road was done at this time, you know, the asphalt is showing this, you know, aging with here. In three years, it should be chip sealed, two years, it should be crack sealed, or there's other options. If the edges of the road are starting to show like decay with it, then they would say, okay, you need to come in and do a shim or an overlay over the road. That's what they're gonna give you, they're not gonna go through, it's not a sonar that they're gonna penetrate the asphalt with, and, you know, give you to say there's a foot of gravel, there's only six inches of asphalt, three inches of asphalt. That's not, this system's not gonna do that, no.
Thank you. Thank you. Alright, that's all of our good business. Um, so we'll move to present to speak. Um, if there is anyone still on the line who'd like to speak, I just take your name for the record and limit yourself to two minutes. Mr. Tullis?
Ralph Tullis, forty-seven Villas Hill Road. A couple of things, but primarily the audio quality when you have a hybrid meeting is kind of horrible from this side. Ms. Washinsky, you come through pretty good. Uh, Liza, not so good. And Jim, about fifty percent of what he says, I can understand, the rest of it is mumbling. It's either the microphone on the, the equipment you have, or it's the fact that people aren't speaking directly to the mic. I'm not sure which it is, um, but, I mean, in essence, I hate hybrid meetings. I'd rather have a hundred percent in person or a hundred percent Zoom. And then there's no issue with hearing people. As far as other stuff, I think, uh, starting at seven-thirty, we'll have a more interesting evening. Uh, and that's all I have to say for now.
Um, so I might encourage the two of you to speak, shout a little bit more.
Yes, we will enunciate better. Thank you for letting us know, Ralph.
Thank you.
It's hard when, you know, we, we can't know how you're hearing us or not, so thank you for letting us know.
See there's some video problems, too, these, this shimmering, some shakings.
Well, sure, it's, and that's not the equipment, that is, um, the wifi in the room. And so you, although we did put some dollars into, um, some wifi upgrades through ARCA. So, you know, I hope some of these, that's why we're upstairs today, not downstairs. Alright, thank you. Uh, Mr. Christensen?
Arthur Christensen, fourteen Birch Meadow Lane. I personally find the response to the gentleman who is going around to the residents of the town, the public relations person that you just addressed earlier, I find your response to that completely unacceptable because the last planning and zoning meeting was exactly two weeks ago and by your own admission in this meeting, you knew exactly what was going on and who this person was and you waited for it to be addressed on planning and zoning while citizens of this town were still concerned about this person. After the agenda item was continued, I don't understand why you couldn't have jumped on Facebook and explained what was going on and at least put some minds at ease instead of waiting two weeks for this to be addressed on the board of selectmen meeting, not even on the planning and zoning meeting. And I always, I wonder if Ms. Reese didn't bring this up earlier, if this would have been addressed on the selectmen's meeting or we would have had to wait till July nineteenth for the board, planning and zoning meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present to speak? Alright, thank you. Um, I, I will just add on, on that, that note, um, the three individual homes that this gentleman did go to, he spoke with, um, personally, they did reach out, um, to them, so we knew that there was, um, certainly no danger to anyone in town. Um, and there was always an intention, an expectation that it would be addressed at planning and zoning and when it was not, my intention was to speak here. So know that. Alright, food and welfare. As always, please support our small businesses and, uh, restaurants if you are able. Uh, Mobile Food Share will be here at the Townhouse Building tomorrow from eleven to eleven-thirty. That is open to all residents. And, uh, it is, Jenny, it's regional. Do you know how far, uh, how many towns our food chair is covered?
I'm sorry, um, food chair is open to everybody, so it's, it's not just regional, like, anybody could come to food chair.
Alright, so they hold them in different regional areas, but anyone from any town can go to any one of them. Thank you.
That's correct.
We know somebody in, in a neighbor in town that could benefit. It's here from eleven to eleven-thirty every other week and tomorrow they will be here. Um, our summer camp begins on Monday. Um, it'll be six weeks. I will say summer camp is full. We were able to allow for fifty campers, so thanks to ARCA funding, there is no cost, um, for the children who are attending. Um, we only ask that they, um, put down a deposit to hold their spot. And once they attend camp, they will get that back. If they, um, did not attend camp, then we would, um, keep that deposit. So this is, um, a great ability for us to, um, utilize ARCA funds to get our, our kids back into camp, uh, revive that program. And, um, hopefully, uh, see them back for several years to come. Next Wednesday, the thirteenth, our summer concert series at River Road, um, Athletic Complex will begin. The first concert will be Bruce John, um, in six-thirty to eight-thirty. So I want to thank all those who sponsored the summer concerts this year, um, and look forward to seeing everyone out there. Um, to either of you have anything for good and welfare?
One thing I, I would like to add, given a couple of the, uh, comments tonight, um, just a reminder that official town business will happen in official town meetings. Um, and that's really the place to come to get, um, to get answers. And once again, as we have done in years past, just caution about the, um, the amount of information that, that does get shared back and forth on social media platforms, is that rare? That is, unless it's coming from the official town page, it's not official information. So, um, as, and I've offered this a million times, um, as, uh, one of your elected representatives, I am here to answer questions anytime, um, and I have yet to really have anybody take me up on it. So, um, for anybody that has concerns or would like to know what we're doing, I offer my, you know, contact me and I'm more than happy to, to have conversations one-on-one or with small groups of individuals or whatever, if there are some questions and I can help clarify anything. But, um, but just once again, the reminder that, you know, official business will happen in official capacities rather than in informal, um, social networking conversations, so.
Yeah, if I can, uh, point back, pick you back on that, uh, Liza. The reason it was addressed in the first place is it seemed, we, we didn't know what the situation was and there was enough of a concern, um, that we, uh, I put out that we would be looking into it, which I did, and then we're looking to respond to it, um, through the proper channels. Uh, again, if it had been an emergency situation, we would use social media in that manner, um, i- if there was certainly danger in any capacity. So I do not condone the methods that were used, um, and plan to speak to that in the proper forum, um, which will be at that applicant hearing. Um, I look forward to hearing.
And it's other issues too, it's not just this.
Absolutely.
It's also, it's, you know, it's conversations about all of the decisions that happen around town and speculation on, on what the positions of anybody on this board and, um, yes, there's, it's social media, not the world we're living in and I understand that. Um, but I just, I just caution everybody that it's probably in everybody's best interest and could save people a lot of anxiety and stress if they did go to the sources rather than, um, continue exacerbating anxiety on social media. Um, even though I know that's sort of the nature of the beast, but still, again, I'm
Add to that if you don't mind, because I, I have people reach out to me and say, hey, what, what can they do about, you know, the, the planning zone, like, either the cannabis thing or the, or the distribution center? The, the best thing they can, they could possibly do is attend the public hearing.
Absolutely.
It's different. It's not, it's, you don't speak during public to speak, but you speak during the hearing, when they open it up and then when they close it, you don't speak about it anymore. And I, I know, uh, Planning Zone is very good about, uh, uh, continuing meetings. So in other words, if they feel like, I don't know, there's plenty of people they didn't get to, they'll just continue it on to another, another day and make sure everybody has their say. So I strongly recommend that people go there. In fact, I, I think the meeting tonight at, uh, seven-thirty. So plenty of time to go there and you can if they're continuing the canvas here, if you want to listen to, participate with that one, of course, the distribution center, as Erica mentioned, is on July nineteenth.
And, and with that there, present to speak, um, is, is available at just about every board meeting. It's not a requirement. Um, but most of our commissions have that on their agenda. It is very different at planning and zoning. I've had, uh, many conversations, uh, with our zoning agents in the last couple of weeks to, um, encourage that commission to address how their, um, present to speak works. Because I know from listening to the last meeting, the last two meetings really, that our residents are frustrated, they don't always understand. It is a very, um, legal and statutory-driven process there that does not happen here. Our present to speak, um, is not, um, under the same scope that theirs is. Their public hearings are very different. With that said, I think it would help, uh, knowing that we have so many residents on the line that don't typically participate in their average meeting, that it would be worth having a conversation, um, in the appropriate manner. I, I, I've made suggestions, they certainly have to, um, handle it the, the way they feel is right, but helping our residents understand that they're not being shut down or shut out of the conversation, but that there's a very, um, specific process there and it is frustrating. Which is why, as much as I wanted, um, to speak about the topic at their last meeting, it was very clear that that application could not be spoken about and exactly what I had to speak about was that application. So, um, I, I too was as frustrated as our residents, um, but I fully understand the process. And so I think we, our commission can do a little bit better a job at explaining the process to folks so that they understand when they're being told they can't speak about something that's on the agenda, why that is, instead of just being shut down. So, but attending the meeting, you know, any, my, my door is open if you come here to the town hall. Um, you know, if you, if you call, I'd be happy to answer any direct questions. But the argue of social media, um, is to give general information to address something in an emergent situation quickly and then the rest of our business is done, um, at the table of the, the proper commission. So, um, while I understand how some of you may feel, the intention was not to shut you out, there is a proper form. I didn't bring it up at our last board of selectmen meeting because I believed it was going to be addressed at seven-thirty that evening. Lo and behold, I listened to the same meeting the rest of you did when something was not addressed. So, um, but please, uh, you know, communicate with us, um, in between meetings and I'd be happy, um, to answer and speak to any of you. With that, anything else for good and welfare folks? I hope everyone had
Nothing else.
Nothing else. I hope everyone had a nice holiday. Uh, I will take just a, a moment to think of, um, those in, um, Illinois who were affected by yet, um, another mass shooting. Our thoughts and prayers certainly, um, aren't enough, um, and, and families in our country deserve more. But please, take a moment to, to keep them in your thoughts, um, and your prayers. With that, I don't, yes, we need the timer here, I will make a motion to adjourn at seven-twelve.
Okay.
Seconded by Liza, this is a non-debatable matter, all those in favor?
Alright.
Thank you all.